Good evening, I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, August 14, 2017. I would like to take this opportunity to use a point of privilege. Let us take a moment to turn our hearts and prayers to the family and friends of Heather Hare, who was tragically killed during Saturday's demonstration in Charlottesville, Virginia. We are also praying for the families of Lieutenant Jay Collin and Trooper Pilot Bert Bates of Virginia State Police who were killed in a helicopter accident while monitoring the unrest. What occurred in Virginia is a stark reminder of how racism, bigotry, and hatred can hurt a community and endanger the innocent. Let us take this time to remind ourselves that our similarities outweigh our differences and let us all work together to ensure that Indianapolis recognizes, is recognized as a city that celebrates diversity and inclusiveness of all races and cultures. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. As the officers are joining us, I'd last to, I'd like to ask all councilors and actually all the public assembled here tonight to please stand with me for just a moment of A moment of silence and solemn remembrance of the lives of our Marion County heroes who lost their lives recently. Please join me as we silently remember Deputy Chief Jim Walters and Lieutenant Aaron Allen. Thank you.
We will now have the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Coats.
Good evening, everyone. I've invited Bill Goodrich, pastor at Horizon Christian Fellowship, to lead us in our opening prayer tonight.
Let's pray. Father, we take this time to remember those that we spoke of here that were touched by tragedy and we just pray that you would comfort their families, comfort us as a nation, comfort us as a city. And Lord, we just pray that you would bless each and every person that's been touched by this. And Lord, we pray that as these men and women gather this evening, that you would give them great wisdom, that your grace and mercy would be poured out upon us as a nation, but particularly as a city. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for the people that are elected by the people of this city, we pray that you would give them wisdom and that, Lord, that you would guide them. And tonight, we just pray that you again would bless us with your presence and we thank you. Give wisdom tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If all councilors would select the green button to indicate your attendance. There are 24 members present. Counselor Feaster did ask to be excused this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to welcome my Ask Me Brothers and Sisters and everybody here to support Proposal 92, including my good friend, Ms. Cordelia Lewis Burks.
Counselor Kreider.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recognize Terry Trent from the Perry Township Advisory Board.
Counselor Oliver.
Madam Chair, with this evening distinguished Ms. Cordelia Lewis, would you please acknowledge your presence, ma'am?
Counselor Corday.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recognize my friend and neighbor, Brian Durham. Brian, go ahead and stand up. Thanks for coming down.
Additional introductions? Counselor Osley.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the Assistant to the President of the Community Action of Greater Indianapolis, Ms. Cynthia Taylor.
Other introductions? The next item on our agenda is the official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, August 14 at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Respectfully, Maggie A. Lewis, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, ICOS to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, July 28, 2017, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 179, 180, 188, and 208, 2017. Said hearing to be held on Monday, August 14 at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Natrina DeBeau, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Natrina DeBeau, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers 15 through 17, general ordinance numbers 37 through 40, general resolution number 10, and special resolution number 35, Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Madam President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is my pleasure to introduce the Mayor of our great city, the Honorable Joseph H. Hogsett.
Thank you all, and good evening. By law, it is my obligation to present to this body a proposed budget for the coming year. And tonight, I carry out that duty. By custom, it has become tradition to introduce such a budget with an accompanying message. And I have one. But out of deference to Leader Gray, I will be brief. Ladies and gentlemen of this august City County Council, ladies and gentlemen present in this Assembly Hall tonight, and to the people of Marion County, tonight, I present to the Indianapolis Marion County City County Council a structurally balanced budget for 2018. I submit a spending plan that, thanks to your work over the last two years, completely erases an annual structural deficit that has required our city leaders for the last decade to sell city assets, to rely on one-time cash infusions, and to draw down reserves in order to fully fund annual budgets. Now, make no mistake, Indianapolis has always had fully funded budgets. But now, for the first time since 2008, this council and our city's taxpayers are presented with a structurally balanced budget that gets Indianapolis out of the red and primes our economic engine for even more growth. The budget I propose tonight is not only a balanced budget which eliminates the structural deficit, it is a budget that increases investments in our neighborhoods, maintains positive fund balances, grows the fiscal stability fund, and holds the line on spending. You may remember that last year, I promised to take a hard look at the executive branch of city government, examining all city agencies to see where efficiencies could be found, where bureaucracy could be cut. Over the last year, we've done just that, eliminating 50 unnecessary government positions with an estimated fiscal impact of $2 million every year, hiring new employees where the city had previously used expensive outside contracts. Upgrading our city's outdated technology, renegotiating expensive contracts to save millions in tax dollars, and we've updated the city's pension plan, already saving nearly one-half a million dollars this year alone. And over the next 10 years, this shift will pay dividends, saving our city millions. But I also want to be clear, the people of Indianapolis expect, and they deserve, more than just making city government more efficient, it also must be more effective. Over the last 84 weeks, I have personally attended more than 1,000 community events. Most I have attended alongside those who serve on this council. And at each of those events, I've heard the same thing when I describe our dedication to doing more with less. Politely, most offer their thanks for spending less. And then pointedly, they'll ask where they can expect to see the "doing more" part. That's why I'm proud that this budget funds two new police recruit classes, hiring 86 new IMPD officers next year, resulting resulting in a projected net gain of 31 beat officers participating in our new community policing model. This will take us, by the end of 2018, to the highest number of sworn police officers in a decade. This budget also continues to support criminal justice reform initiatives under the Office of Public Health and Safety, including the Rubin Engagement Center, which opened in January, the mobile crisis assistance teams fighting the opioid epidemic which launched last month, and new coordinators that are working diligently to address food insecurity and to provide meaningful reentry services for those who are in need. And this budget also fuels our renewed focus on building relationships and trust within our community. Relying now more than ever on neighborhood-based solutions. In last year's budget, thanks to the work of the Public Safety Committee, we increased the amount of funding for our city's crime prevention grants for the first time since 2009. This year, we will once again increase those funds by $250,000, a 25% increase. This budget is also accompanied by an updated four-year infrastructure plan that will invest more than $500 million towards streets, sidewalks, bridges, and stormwater improvements between now and 2021. That means more money dedicated to addressing longstanding problems in our neighborhoods and increased funding for greenways, expanding options for multimodal transportation, and helping us diminish our community's carbon footprint. Over the next four years, hundreds of homes will benefit from drainage improvements, helping to flow water away from roads and from yards. Next year alone, a $24 million investment will work to address areas that too often flood after heavy rains. And with $120 million worth of infrastructure improvements scheduled for 2018, next year we'll stretch dollars as far as they can go to improve our roadways and increase our connectivity. But while this work is long overdue, it isn't the only investment that we propose for your consideration tonight. This budget supports the establishment of permanent housing solutions for an additional 400 of our neighbors throughout our community who are experiencing homelessness. This budget also remains dedicated to our promise of revitalizing 2,000 homes within the next two years. We announced that goal in April, and I'm proud to report that we are now nearly a quarter of the way toward reaching it through demolition, construction, and revitalization. This budget also is submitted tonight with an appropriation request to invest more than $1 million that we were able to claw back from the Carrier Corporation, assisting more than 600 working families as they seek to land on their feet after a wrong-headed decision to close a portion of this great Indianapolis factory. And finally, this budget maintains funding for community programs dedicated to making Indianapolis a better place now and in the future. Millions to continue our leadership in pre-K education for our children, as well as significant support for the efforts of our partners like Keep Indianapolis Beautiful, and funding for efforts to promote and create arts and culture in every neighborhood throughout our city. President Lewis, Vice President Adamson, Leader Gray, Leader McQuillan, councilors all. 20 months ago, we took a common oath. On the day we took that oath, we faced a $50 million structural budget deficit. And thanks to your diligent and thoughtful work over the last year and a half, I stand here today able to present to you for your consideration a proposed budget that is structurally balanced and an annual budget deficit that has been eliminated. Together, we can put our city on sound financial footing for the first time in a decade while once again making the kinds of strategic investments that will transform neighborhoods and keep our community safe. I know that it can happen because I've seen the work we can do when we block out the noise of partisanship and focus on what is best for our city. Together, we have acted. Together, we have achieved. Together, we have shown through our hard work, rather than through our harsh words, that local government is a place where the community comes together and solves our problems, that local government is responsive to the people, that local government is the place where we get things done. And so tonight, I leave you with one final request. Let us continue. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for July 24, 2017. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentations of petitions, morals, special resolutions, and council resolutions. Proposal number 115, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal 115, 2017, appoint Savannah Harris Askey to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department Mayor Board. Madam President, proposal was in committee on 8/9/2017. It passed out with a 9 to 1 vote with Counselor Clay casting the negative vote. Counselor Clay raised some legal questions during the hearing. I request a postponement to our next meeting so we can work with our legal team and the Office Corporation Council to address the issue. It was a motion to postpone.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded to postpone proposal number 115. Comments from councilors? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 204, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal 204, 205, 206, and 207. Proposal 204, 2017, reappoints Magistrate Kimberly-Madley to Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal 205, appoints Nola Hunt to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal 206, appoints Tiffany Wood to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. And proposal 207 approves the appointment of Tyler Boma as the Director of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency. Madam President, all proposals passed 10 to 0, iso move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? CNN, proceed to the board for our votes. The proposal carry 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introductions of proposals. Madam Clerk, if you would just wait a few seconds to allow folks to exit the chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number 215, introduced by Counselor Evans, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the statement of benefits for Buckeye Corrugated Incorporated Crawwall Division as an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal numbers 216 through 218, all refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 216, introduced by Counselor Scales, authorizes intersection controls at Parker Lane and 66th and 67th Streets in District 3. Proposal number 217, introduced by Counselor Westler, authorizes intersection controls at Tulip Drive and Tulip Court in District 24. Proposal number 218, introduced by Counselor Westler, authorizes intersection controls at Crosby Buck Drive and Whittaker Valley Boulevard in District 24. Proposal number 19, introduced by Councilors Gray and Clay, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, amends the code to add a new section regarding public use of IMPD firearms ranges. Proposal number 221, introduced by Counselor Clay, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, limits the duration of service on certain boards and commissions. Proposal number 222 and 223, both refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number 222, introduced by Councilors Lewis, Adamson, Gray, and Robinson, approves the tax levy and rate for the Police Special Service District for 2018. Proposal number 223, introduced by Councilors Lewis, Adamson, Gray, and Robinson, approves the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District for 2018. Proposal number 224, introduced by Councilors Lewis, Adamson, and Gray, refer to the Public Works Committee, approves the tax levy and rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for 2018. Proposal number 225, introduced by Councilors Lewis, Adamson, and Gray, refer to the Administration in Finance, Community Affairs, and Education, Metropolitan and Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and Public Works Committees, adopts the annual budget for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2018. Proposal number 242, introduced by Councilors Evans and Lewis, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Allen Bridwell to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Decatur Township Comprehensive Plan. Proposal numbers 243 and 244, both refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 243, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, appoints Nathan Wilson to the Marion County Stormwater Management Technical Advisory Committee. Proposal number 244, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves additional appropriations totaling $14 million in the 2017 budget of the Department of Public Works Transportation G-. General Fund to provide additional street lighting, fulfill the match requirement of the Community Crossings Grant, and to support the Transportation Capital Improvement Program funded by additional sources of revenue as a result of the House Bill 1002 Fuel Tax. And proposal number 245, introduced by Counselor Ossley, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appropriates $1 million in the 2017 budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development Carrier Redevelopment Fund for two incentive programs to support displaced carrier employees. Madam President, this concludes the introduction of proposals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposals number 226 through 241 are all rezoning proposals certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August 4, 2017. If no councilors wishes to call down any of those proposals for reconsideration, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of those proposals? CNN, they will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. There is a public hearing set for recommendations for the Civil Taxing Unit Budgets Non-Binding Review, public testimony for civil taxing unit representatives only, and you will be allowed two minutes. Mr. Beesicker? Or Mr. Brown going to speak to the... Mr. Beesicker?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. The statute on non-binding review was amended two years ago to change the process, and it now provides that at the first meeting of the county fiscal body in August, there's to be a review of the estimated levying limits provided by DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance, and the circuit breaker estimate provided by DLGF. And that the statute now requires that the county fiscal body invite representatives from the taxing units located within the county to attend this meeting and have an opportunity to comment on that taxing unit's proposed budgets, tax levies, and tax rates for the ensuing calendar year, although the council does not have any authority to actually review or modify those budgets. And the statute also provides that after the county fiscal body has held this meeting, the county fiscal body may prepare and distribute a written recommendation, or if not, then the minutes of the meeting held under this, on this date, would be distributed by the county auditor to all taxing units in the county after the minutes have been approved. So this is the opportunity for any representatives of the taxing units to comment on their proposed budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Beesicker. Are there any representatives from the taxing units? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 179, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal 179, 2017, approves a transfer, an additional appropriations in the 2017 budget of the Marion Superior Court for court equipment, drug testing, drug treatment diversions, state grants, federal grants, and county grant funds to cover contractual obligations, equipment, and staff salaries and benefits. Monica Ferguson, the Director of Finance for the Marion Superior Court, stated that the proposal makes the following requests: a transfer of $20,000 from Character 4 to Character 2, I'm sorry, from Character 4 to Character 3, and a court equipment fund, an additional appropriation of $8,907 in Character 3, and the drug testing fund, a transfer of $1,374 in Character 1 to Character 4 of the drug treatment diversion fund, a reduction of Character 2 of $150,000 to Character 3 of $500,000 in Character 4 of $150,000 in the federal grants fund to correspond with $800,000 increase in the state grant fund, a transfer of $20,000 from Character 4 to Character 1 of the county grants fund to cover the cost of a part-time case manager in mental health court. Counselor Coats moves, seconded by Counselor Scales, to send proposal 179 to the full council to due pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of 10 to 0. Madam President, ISO move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 179?
On the new taxing districts now...
Mr. Vaughn, we're speaking to proposal number 179, sir.
Even if we are...
No, sir, 179, not even if we are.
Well, 179 is just passing around money from one entity to another to buy heroin needles and tourniquets for junkies, and that's what it's all about, because this council has done nothing but lay a bed down. I was on the way to the council meeting this evening, seeing two buses of people going to a brew pub tour at 4 o'clock in the evening. So I think this council has been totally incompetent in the way that they are conducting the business of this city, and this appropriations is just one more step toward this where they provide actual drug paraphernalia, and also they get involved with even distribution of heroin. So I think when you tell somebody that you're going to give them a shot of Narcan that costs $4,500...
Mr. Vaughn, please speak to proposal number 179.
It is. It's about funding for drug clinics.
No, it's not, sir. Please speak to the proposal. Please stick to the proposal.
Okay, well, the treatment programs that they are...
Yes, sir.
Is it okay?
Yes, sir.
The treatment programs that they are sponsoring tonight, it tells those people who are on heroin and that are injecting heroin into their veins that if you come to us, we're going to give you treatment, and we're not going to lock you up. But I just object, you know, I just object because...
Mr. Vaughn, Madam Clerk, stop the clock. Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn, with all due respect, we want you to testify, but we need you to speak specifically to the proposals.
Yeah, okay, I do that, man.
No, sir, I'm trying to work with you, but I need you to speak to the proposals. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 179? And I ask that you please remain silent if you're going to stay in the chamber. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 179? CNN, proceed to the board for our votes. The proposal carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 180, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal 180, 2017, approves an additional appropriation in the 2017 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's State Federal Grant Funds to provide mental and behavioral health treatment, jail programs and equipment for the Communications Division funded by grants from the Indiana Department of Correction and the Department of Justice. Barbara Lawrence, CFO for the Marion County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office stated that they are requesting a transfer of $95,000 from Character 4 of the state grant fund to the federal grant fund. She stated that the $151,000 in Character 1 is the first half of the grant awarded by the IDOC 2018, which will be used to provide mental and behavioral health treatment for inmates. She also stated that they are requesting an allotment of $13,400 in Character 2, which is the beginning of balance of the 2017 grant that will be used for behavioral health managers. Counselor Clay moves, seconded by Counselor Simpson, to send proposal 180 to the full council to due pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of 10 to 0. Madam President, ISO move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 180?
I've got it right here. Now, this also talks about funding behavioral health treatments for public safety. That means the criminal faction. Now, if you say that addiction to heroin and cocaine is an actual mental illness, then why don't we have asylums for those people to go into? Our state constitution provides for asylums for people who have fallen on unfortunate times, who are maybe hooked on heroin. Article 9, Section 3 provides for that help. We are criminalizing a large segment of our population tonight, and when we give this money to law enforcement and this, to do this over and above all the other valuable work that they have to do in this city, they turn into people who are interested in treating behavioral problems. They turn into people who are interested in, people who are actually hooked on heroin, and when they go to the spot, they have to discern who those people are so they know where to send them. This has no business being linked to law enforcement in any way, because it criminalizes our behavior that we call disease. So our constitution provides for this. It provides for asylums, to put these people in asylums, so they can rest and get their lives back, not to send them to jail, not to have 40% of our Marion County Sheriff's Jail filled with heroin addicts and other addicts under his care. He does, he cannot afford to do it, and I don't care how much money you appropriate for that purpose, he's not going to be able to do it. So I think you just better watch when you go down this trail to trying to fund health programs, and you don't have the real professionals in the place to administer these programs.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 180? Comments from councilors? CNN, proceed to the board for our votes. The proposal carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 188, refer to Public Works Committee Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number 188, 2017, approves an additional appropriation of $3,140,000 into the 2017 budget of the Department of Public Works from the Stormwater Management, Stormwater Capital, Rebuild Indy, and Transportation General Funds to purchase supplies and vehicles for the Channel Maintenance Service Group, Stormwater Capital Program Design and Construction, Transportation Capital Program Design and Construction, and to provide safer routes to school program supplies. Counselor Oliver moves, seconded by Counselor Gray, to send proposal 188 to the full council to due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 9 to 0. An ISO move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 188?
Now, this is so germane to what I'm going to talk about here, where you're talking about increasing our taxes, another levy to provide for safer routes to school. Now, well, it has school on here, safer routes to school.
Mr. Vaughn, maybe you should read a digest, sir.
Well, it's spending money to appropriate money for safer routes to school. When IPS is about to increase your property taxes $25 a month for all you seniors out there, and that's why I object to Maggie Lewis and Jeff Miller being involved with any appropriations that's towards taxing.
Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn, make your comments without...
I really do.
Pointing out my colleagues.
Well, these councilors, okay, well, I'm sorry I said their names.
Proposal number 188, sir, yes.
But I'm just going back to this point where you're talking about safer routes to school programs. The state of Indiana is supposed to appropriate those funds, because they're on the hook to fund common schools in any school in our district. They are supposed to be out there making those improvements. They are supposed to be spending the money, not the city of Indianapolis. This is where we slip again in appropriate money for something that we can't really tie down. When you say safer routes to school, you've not specified any route that you're going to repair, so I think this money could be spent on anything other than safer routes to school.
Counselor...
And plus, it's a dual situation where the state of Indiana is definitely on the hook to do these improvements. If they're not doing them, the city of Indianapolis, how long, much longer can we afford to pay double? I mean, we could use that money for something else. There's a lot of things I know in this city, like increasing the lifespan of the infrastructure that we do.
188.
Point of order, Madam President.
Counselor Clay.
Point of order.
Counselor Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request that the council for the council check into our rules of decorum. While this is the public chamber, and it is the people's house, and while we welcome varied opinions from all segments of our communities, I think the president has been beyond gracious any number of times to allow this rambling to go on, and at some point, we need to bring order into this chamber. And with your permission, Madam President, I'd like to direct and ask our council to the council to look at what kind of decorum we can put in place, whether it's strenuous time refrains, or whether it is to ensure that people stay on topic, because what we're doing right now is creating opportunities for us to be insulted by the public, and I don't think we're here for that.
Thank you. Mr. Beesicker, do you want to comment? And I appreciate your comments, Counselor Clay. Mr. Beesicker?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, under our current council rules, the president is tasked with keeping decorum in order in the chamber, and the president or any member of the council can seek a ruling on the germaneness of the testimony of any public commenter, that is, whether the comments are relevant to the proposal that's before the body. So those are the two, those are the two principal rules that we have in place now, dealing with public testimony that does not really address the proposals at hand.
Yes, Wade Coleman. We must remember one thing. Our constitution allows us the freedom of speech, first of all.
Sir, I need you to speak to proposal number 188. You are not here to comment on what my colleague just shared.
That is correct. You are 100% correct. Right now, you're allocating, appropriating $3.14 million. One segment is rebuild Indy. Rebuilding Indy consists of selling the properties on tax sales, rebuilding infrastructures, roads, sewers, and so forth. I would like to ask all of you to do your due process, I mean, to actually investigate these, I mean, basically to investigate all these monies and how they are spent, because right now, we are not, there's no transparency here. You know, you're saying that you want to spend $685,000 on storm water management? In what area? You're stating that you want to spend $1.5 million in storm water capital? In what area of town are you planning on doing this? Rebuild Indy, $930,000. What area of town are you planning on doing this? We need more transparency. Right now, we're working with imaginary numbers. We're working with a dream on where these monies are actually being allocated. You can easily take these monies, once they're allocated, appropriated, and spend them elsewhere. What guarantee do we have that this $3.14 million is going to go be appropriated to these entities? We have no guarantee. And the reason why, because Mayor Hawkeset and you guys can do whatever y'all want at the drop of a dime. You can actually, yeah, just, we just need more transparency. That's all I have to say, more transparency.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. So the public is invited to all our committee meetings, and at those committees, that's where we do the council business. That's where we invite the agencies and the public to come and discuss these proposals in detail. We don't do that at the council meetings, as you all know, but for those folks in the audience and watching, if you want to learn more about these proposals, we invite you to come to the committee meetings. If you cannot come to the committee meetings, you can watch the committee meetings on our Indy.gov website and get all your answers. And if that is not available, you are always free to call the council office at 327-4242, and we'll be happy to answer your questions at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 188? Counselor Adamson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clear the air on the safer routes to school program by reading the brief part that we covered in committee. Counselor Gray during the committee had asked Ms. Park to explain the safer routes to school program. Ms. Park stated that one of the IPS schools went after the safer route to school program when it was in existence in 2014. She said that the school was awarded about $75,000. That was awarded $75,000, and they spent $50,000 to do some design and planning. And that was for, say, getting kids to school and from home, whether they can certainly could not, kids walking to and from school, and whether or not certain safety components could be added, such as streetlights or crossing signals, and that's where the safer routes to school comes in. It's not an appropriation from our tax dollars.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to comment too on the stormwater usage. We did talk about that in committee to earlier comment, and I applaud the administration for working on Drexel Gardens. That's a neighborhood that I had, and now that Counselor Evans has a pleasure representing, and they were literally underwater, they're in a flood plain. They had pictures and canoes. I mean, it was a terrible situation. That's one of the many reasons that we raised the stormwater funds was for crisis neighborhoods like that. like that. And I also appreciate the administration looking at potentially Mars Hill as another area to, to invest in. They're just in the flood fringe, and by taking care of these neighborhoods like we are going to with Drexel Gardens and perhaps will in the future with Mars Hill allows development in a neighborhood that otherwise, being in a flood plain, you're, you're out of luck. You just can't develop in it. It's pretty much telling the neighborhood, this is what you're going to look like to the end of time. So, this is a great usage of stormwater funds. It's why we passed the stormwater tax or rate increase, and I really appreciate Director Parker for directing funds there.
Additional comments? CNN, I'm sorry, Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo to what Counselor Adamson and Counselor Miller said, because this was thoroughly discussed in our Public Works Committee, but something else in addition I'd like to add is with the safer routes to school, I believe this also included bicycles and bicycle helmets, a program that helps children who might not otherwise have bicycles, might not have helmets, and it taught them how to, how to safely ride their bicycles. So, this program is looking to the future for children having bicycles, having the ability to use that type of transportation, teaching them how to safely use their bicycles and giving them, providing them with helmets to protect them. So, just want to add that to the safer routes to school.
Thank you, Counselor McHenry. Additional comments? CNN, proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 208, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal 208, 2017 approves an additional appropriation of $237,391 in 2017 budget for the Marion County Public Defender Agency and the County General Fund to hire a new TPR CHINs team, and for reimbursement of capital and life without parole public defense cases, offset by reimbursement from the Indiana Public Defender Commission. Mr. Bob Hill stated that the issues surrounding termination of parental rights and child identity services, cases ongoing and cases continue to increase, as such that they're requesting $117,000 in additional funding as needed to hire new TPR CHINs teams. Y'all stated that the, they are requesting $119,468 to reimburse the agency for the death penalty and life without parole cases. Counselor Clay moved, seconded by Counselor Simpson, to send proposal 208 to the full council that do pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of ten to zero, Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 208?
Prisonplanet.com, I was at this committee meeting, and you're talking about CHINs. You're talking about a, a, a situation that was created over in the State House to label more of our children with some kind of a disabling disease. This is why you have a forty percent population of our jail that has mental problems right now. This is why. We keep on funding it, and the thing is, we cannot afford as a city to go down this route. We need to let the state of Indiana come in and pick up the tabs on these people that they're creating in our city, rather than to let them go out and walk at large. They need to be in orphanages where they can be properly taken care of in a proper institution, not at large, not being preyed on by the public at large, not being preyed on by every professional that think they can cut a prescription or something. This is what this does. It helps the lawyers that are over at the juvenile center. Marilyn Moore's just said that it was impossible to do anything about that. She referred to those people who are getting the CHIN services as a colony of feral cats. So, we need to understand, the more this city buys into funding programs like this, the more of it we get. The more money we spend on it, the more people are coming to the table, the professionals are coming to the table, the institutions, private institutions are coming to the table, coming to feed on vulnerable children who have been diagnosed, maybe not even by a professional, with some kind of a debilitating disease, to lead them to this destination, and then lead them into the prison system or into jail where we have over a fifty-seven percent population of mentally retarded. So this council keeps going down this road, and it's got to end somewhere.
Additional comments, councilors? Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to proposal number 208? CNN, proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is special orders unfinished business. There is no business there. We'll proceed to special orders final adoption. Proposal number ninety-two, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number ninety-two, 2017 amends the code to establish a minimum living wage of thirteen dollars per hour for all full-time city and county employees, and deletes outdated salary schedules and charts. At a prior committee meeting, CFO Brown had shared how the thirteen dollar per hour mark was determined. Comments were also heard by Controller Fagety Kidura, and public testimony was taken. At this time, Madam President, I, with your permission, do have an amendment on the table. I move to amend proposal number ninety-two, 2017, including the digest by deleting the language that is double stricken through, and adding the language that is double underscored in the highlighted portions to read as follows. In the digest, amends the code to establish a living wage where minimum is stricken through. In fact, Madam President, throughout the ordinance, wherever minimum is mentioned before living wage, that is stricken through. Additionally, in the amendment, language is changed to reflect an effective date of January 1, 2018. All of these changes can be seen on the amendment before the committee or the council. So with that, Madam Chair, I so move.
The motion to amend has been properly moved and seconded. Comments on the amendment? Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. As a member of the Rules and Public Policy Committee, I listened with great interest to the testimony regarding establishing a baseline salary for all city council or all city-county employees. And at the end of that testimony, I voted with a bipartisan and unanimous committee to acknowledge our hard-working men and women to fund this initiative and to fund it immediately. We must not make our lowest-paid municipal employees wait three extra months before we begin to pay them a fair and well-earned wage. I urge my fellow councilors to vote no on this delaying amendment, and then vote yes in proposal ninety-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Additional comments on the amendment? CNN, we'll proceed to the board for our vote on the amend. It's on the amendment, yes. We'll proceed to the board for our vote on the amendment. The amendment passes. Fourteen to zero. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move proposal number ninety-two for passage.
One second, audience, that was just, hang on, one second, Counselor. That was just the amendment. We have one more step. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move proposal number ninety-two for passage as amended.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from councilors? Counselor McQuillan?
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to be supporting proposal ninety-two tonight when it comes up for vote. I would like to point out that by that amendment, we just postponed by three months, the amount of time people have to wait until they get that raise, but that's okay. So thank you very much, and I do urge my colleagues to vote in support tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say three things real quickly. Number one, I plan to vote in support of this, but I want to make two observations that are of great concern to me, and that is to ensure the sustainability of these dollars that are being appropriated beyond the current fiscal. I know that we have a tradition of being able to fund these moving forward, and that you had made clear earlier that there has never been a time where we had to pull back raises because we could not do that. But I still want to raise the caution flag that without these dollars being assured and not projected, that it is, it is of some concern to this counselor. The second thing that I would observe is that the funding of this proposal as it stands now, that we will support, is going to be, as I understand it, at the expense of agencies that have surplus dollars within their agencies. And I'm, I'm extremely concerned about struggling city, city agencies that are already doing the best they can with strapped dollars to provide services to the taxpayers of Indianapolis and Marion County. And because they've done their job well, they have some savings in their, in particular characters, to which we are now going to come back and fund this proposal. So, that's why this leads back to my first comment about finding better ways in which to fund this moving forward, because we should not expect agencies that are already struggling to do what they do, to now, as a punitive measure for saving money, have that money taken out to fund other people's raises. So I will support it, but I want to make those two observations about sustainability and about funding it from the surplus of other agencies and categories. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would much rather have seen this go into effect in October and giving the amount to the increase then. I do have a problem with calling it a living wage, however. I like, Counselor McQuillan's reference is calling it a baseline wage, because a living wage to a single person is definitely not the same thing as a living wage is to a single mom who is trying to raise several children, or a, or even a couple who are trying to make ends meet. So I would like to, I would much rather we would call it a baseline instead of a living wage, because what's a living wage to you and what's a living wage to me is entirely two different things. But something else that I would really like to see is, while we are raising the baseline to thirteen dollars an hour, I certainly hope that all of the departments will also look at the employees who are making currently thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, even sixteen dollars an hour, into raising their salaries as well, because as we know, those people deserve a raise just as much as everyone else.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, for looking out for me. Madam President, thank you. At some point, I thought I was a sponsor of this proposal, and I don't see my name on this list, so I'd like to be re-added as a sponsored proposal ninety-two and offer my support for the passing of this tonight. And I would say, it's about damn time. That's all.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Madam President. I just think one of the things we should really take into consideration here is, as we've mentioned already, is the fact that we are now looking at potentially having people that are supervisors, superiors, making almost as much as their subordinates. While I do agree, many of the employees here at City County do need to have a raise, they definitely deserve it, they work hard, I think one of the things we do need to consider is the fact, that effect on moving forward.
Counselor Osley, then Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number ninety-two is straightforward. At 0.05 percent of our city budget, at a cost of less than $500,000 per year, the city has the funds to enable this. And it's important that we lead by example, as we request other entities that do business with us or that come to us for assistance, to do the same. Thirteen dollars an hour is a baseline, and this is what we, as a city, need to be doing to lead by example. We should not have poverty wages in our own house, and it is time that we make the difference. Put our foot down and do what we all know is the right thing. So I will definitely be supporting proposal number ninety-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, for the last about two years, I've been mentioning every time somebody comes to the city asking for money for a project, that we request them to raise their wages, and we succeeded, thanks to the strong defense line that Counselor Osley put up on, on a previous project to get up to twelve dollars an hour. I was embarrassed then to learn we were paying people as low as nine forty an hour that worked for the city. I was completely unaware of that, and I'm sorry, that's all I can say. It's embarrassing. So I don't care what it takes, to Counselor Clay's point, we have to be sustainable. We have to be. Sir, you are a hundred percent correct, but this is embarrassing. So, we're going to fix this, because we should not have people who are putting in forty hours of work with taxpayer dollars eligible for SNAP, Medicaid, welfare. We owe them the dignity. We owe them the dignity of forty hours of hard work. So thank you for putting up as long as you did, getting paid what you did, and that's going to change. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Simpson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with my fellow Counselor Clay, but I difference a lot, because I'm a person who believe in, if one get it, everybody should get it. And this seemed to me not to be equal across the board for all the people who've been sitting here that hadn't had a raise, and it should be in total. And that's the reason I feel that, why this group may deserve it, there are people that are above them, that they're going to be right there next to them, and they're not going to get a raise. There's a lot, we got six thousand, I think the number is six thousand employees. Some of them are under union contracts, some of them are not. But my point is, is that I think the controller in them is working on a study, and I feel that study is what we need so we can feel everybody evenly get this raise, because it's, how do you think the, while we're sitting here cheering on those people on the lawyer, and what do you think we're doing for the morale that's not getting it? And I'm here to support everybody, so I will be voting no.
Counselor Oliver, then Counselor Adamson.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yes, I do support proposal number ninety-two, and I'll tell you why. Because at one time, in my early years, I was a minimum wage earner. And what this proposal attempts to do, and I've been assured by other colleagues, is that this is just a beginning. Those of us that take a job at the city of Indianapolis, we have an opportunity to work our way out of poverty. This won't do it all, but this is the beginning, and a good beginning, and that's why I support proposal number ninety-two gladly. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two things real quick, and I wanted to address the concerns about supervisor versus subordinate pay, and to point out that that is one of the main reasons for the January effective date, is to allow that process to take place, to determine exactly where those pay lines are landing. I would also like to add to the point made earlier about the various departments that would have to see a reduction in their overall funding. I would just say that a budgets that are balanced on the back of the poor is immoral budget, and we have an obligation to stand up for all the people that work for this city, but I think we have to right-size the people at the bottom as soon as possible. Thank you.
Additional comments? Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say that this subject is near and dear to me and my heart. I remember coming on as a freshman counselor, hadn't been on the council maybe thirty, sixty days, and I had someone who worked in probation office come and talk to me and said, I heard you was a person to talk to because you listen to the common people. And that is true, because I'm a common person, so I believe in listening to the common people. And with that... And with that said, he was telling me how it was hard for him to provide a sustainable, livable, to sustain his living and pay his bills for his wife, and he had a newborn, when he only brought home ten dollars an hour. So he, I always kept him in mind when I worked through the council and worked through situations to see what I could do to put him and others like him that are city employees at a better off position than what they are. This bill won't fix, and it won't increase everyone, but those who do need it, who are lower than, or close to minimum wage, this is not a minimum wage increase, because it's not our purview, our authority as a council to do that, although it will increase those to make them be able to have a better footing to do some of the things that others do, that are able to do at a higher pay and wage. And I just want to say that this is a step forward for that. I had a concern that was addressed just earlier today, one of those who are on public assistance bumping up to thirteen dollars, would it take them off the threshold to reduce and kick them off of public assistance, would it pull them over to what they call that assistant cliff? And actually, I was told that there's only about five employees out of three hundred and twenty that it would do that to, and that they're willing to work with those five employees to see if they want to accept it, or not accept it, or what else we as a city can do for them, to aid them. So that was good to know, that we're helping with this proposal more than hurting. And then the other thing is, the Bible says, "What you do to the least of these, you done unto me." So we don't help the least of our people, we can't help anybody else. So I just want to say, for that, I'm committed, I thank you, this is something I wanted to do, starting on the council, and Madam President, I ask you to add me as a sponsor, it's something I believe in, we are the people for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, I traditionally do not speak on proposal, but as a sponsor of the proposal, along with Counselor Adamson, Osley, Robinson, Jackson, Evans, I do want to thank you all for staying committed to this proposal. We've been having this conversation since two thousand and eight. Call it a livable wage, a baseline, whatever you want, a raise is a raise, and it's about time that we take care of the people who does the business for us. And so I encourage you all to consider to support, consider supporting proposal number ninety-two. We'll now proceed to the board for our votes. The board's open. Thank you, counselors. The next item, the next item on our agenda is proposal number one seventy-seven, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairman Osley.
Proposal number one seventy-seven, two thousand seventeen. Proposal number one seventy-seven, two thousand seventeen amends the ban the box ordinance because of a new change to state law. Our general counsel, Fred Beeseker, stated that the General Assembly recently enacted Senate Enrolled Act Three Twelve.
Mr. Chairman, one second, please.
No.
Mr. Chairman, continue.
Thank you, Madam President. And just by way of commentary, this is another proposal that deals with fairness, just like the one we previously heard. Fred Beeseker, our general counsel, stated that the General Assembly had recently enacted Senate Enrolled Act Three Twelve, which is effective July the first, which says that unless federal or state law provides otherwise, a city may not prohibit an employer from obtaining or using criminal history information during their hiring process, to the extent allowed by federal or state law, rules, regulations, or two, at the time an individual makes an initial application for employment, A, making an inquiry regarding the individual's criminal history information, or B, requiring the individual to disclose the individual's criminal history information. Therefore, the ban the box ordinance needs to be amended in light of Senate Enrolled Act Three Twelve. Counselor Miller stated that individuals have to get help, have got to help people, I'm sorry, that we've got to help people who have simply made a mistake and paid their time to be able to get a job again. And Counselor Adamson requested that when they have applications come before the committee, the company provide a report of their policies, practices, and standards, so that they can see, being the city, if the policies match the value system of the city. I personally want to ensure that there's a level playing field for as many applicants as possible. The council and the administration have the right spirit, because I believe it's important that we have as much accessibility and opportunity for people to be successful, and not to be harmed by mistakes from their past. This particular proposal is a difficult one, because three years ago, we did pass the ban the box ordinance, and in that process, have hired almost two hundred new individuals, who might not otherwise have been hired. And we led by example. And I just want to make my own commitment going forward, that whatever this council can do, and whatever our metropolitan economic development committee can do, to ensure that folks are, to ensure that this particular policy or this particular issue is highlighted publicly, I will do, and I hope my fellow counselors will as well, that we do not support, we don't endorse companies that arbitrarily have rules in place that discriminate against individuals, simply because of a criminal record, especially when we don't know what the crime may have been, how long ago the crime may have been, the nature of the crime, or the age at which the crime was committed. And I do hope that as we had passed the ban the box ordinance three years ago, practically unanimously, that this council will stand on that spirit, that the things that we do are for all of our community members, not just for some who didn't get caught. So Madam President, Counselor Adamson moved, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal number one seventy-seven to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Counselor Miller, then Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. It's sad to follow us taking care of one issue in our city, which is low wages, to follow, making that incredibly good vote by a vote to weaken our ordinance, but our friends in the State House have forced us to do that, even though we voted twenty-six to two, and had a Republican mayor sign it into law, and have seemed to have done pretty well with it. So sad, but oh well. And I don't believe the state likes it when the government at the federal level tells them what to do, so I don't understand this continued pattern, but here we are. Counselor Osley, I applaud you. You have done a fantastic job on this issue, you have never let up on it, and you have found, you and Mr. Beeseker have found a very clever way, a fairly clever way to perhaps keep it alive. I like the fact that we will look at the policies, we will ask for the policies, and that will be a determining factor in decision. So I hope the vendors don't think they got out of this scot-free. We have a responsibility to help our society. If we don't think there's a tie between the poverty level, the crime level, and the homeless level, with our ex-offenders trying to get a job again, we're kidding ourselves. So thank you, Counselor Osley, for doing all you could do. I will be voting sadly to weaken your ordinance tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President, and Jeff sort of stole my thunder there. I really just wanted to thank Chairman Osley for his championing of this proposal through the process. This has been a real labor of love for him, and I know, since we were first elected in two thousand and eleven, this has been a real priority for him. And I will commit to you that I will help in any way I can to make sure that this is a widespread understanding in our city, and we get as many people in the city to follow suit as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to second the thoughts of both Counselor Miller and Adamson, and thank Counselor Osley for his dedication and commitment to this cause, because it has been one that has taken much work and time. And I, Counselor Miller, you speak a lot, and the words that you said today, though, have never rung so true, and I appreciate your comments on the matter, because they're very true, and this is a heartfelt issue that's hurting our city.
CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one eighty-one, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal one eighty-one, two thousand seventeen approves a transfer in the two thousand seventeen budget of IFD's Cumulative Capital Fund to support fire station repairs, preventive maintenance, and troubleshooting for EMS equipment. Counselor Evans moved, seconded by Counselor Scales, to amend proposal one eighty-one, the motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Dawn Sykes Randall, CFO of IFD, stated that they are requesting to transfer existing appropriations within the Fire Cumulative Capital Fund, reducing character four by one hundred thousand dollars and increasing character three by one hundred thousand dollars. She stated that the money is no longer needed in character four for equipment as a result of a vendor's inability to supply certain equipment this year due to changes in the hardware. Instead, the money will be used for services to do maintenance and repairs to several fire stations. Counselor Clay moved, seconded by Counselor Evans, to send proposal one eighty-one to the full council with a due pass recommendation, due pass as amended recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of ten to zero, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one eighty-nine, refer to Public Works Committee, Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal one eighty-nine, twenty seventeen approves a transfer of one hundred thousand dollars in the two thousand seventeen budget of the Department of Public Works, City Cumulative Parks and Recreation Fund, to cover the cost of appraisal services, painting, and demolition. Counselor McHenry moved, seconded by Counselor Scales, to send proposal one eighty-nine to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion was carried by a vote of nine to zero, and I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one ninety, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number one ninety amends the code to add a new council rule requiring notice of board and commission vacancies and expiring terms during committee council codes, moved seconded by Counselor McQuillan, not McKellen, McQuillan, to amend proposal number one ninety by adding to section one fifty-one dash six-nine subsection C, the following language, quote, "The clerk shall also provide notice of any legal requirements with respect to the vacancies and expiring terms," end quote. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Counselor McQuillan moved, seconded by Counselor Kreider, to send proposal number one ninety to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Madam President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, we do hear you public, when you do tell us, our constituency, you want more transparency. This actual is a proposal that we tried to, we did to offer more transparency and availability for those who do want to serve in public service and on boards and committees, so that's one of the things we put this proposal into motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional comments? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two hundred, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee Chairman Osley.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal number two hundred, two thousand seventeen authorizes a Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligation in an amount not to exceed four point six-five million dollars to acquire land for redevelopment through the section eight, one oh eight loan guarantee program, which is a financing tool that allows communities and states to expand the size of their community development block grant programs, as much as five times their CDBG allocations. And if activities meet CDBG requirements, and loan, and the loan meets the section one oh eight under writing criteria, the city issues a note for HUD's guarantee. A project, the project overview, this particular project would have one hundred and thirty-two apartment units, two hundred and fifty-plus parking spaces, one hundred and twenty secured garages, twenty-seven thousand square feet of office space, six thousand square feet of street-facing retail. Counselor Fanning commended the applicant on their vision and taking the hard route of revitalizing a vast white elephant on East Washington. And Counselor Miller stated that he was very supportive, that the building was getting reused, and appreciates the applicant for making it happen. Counselor Adamson moved, seconded by Counselor Kreider, to send proposal number two hundred to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Madam President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two zero nine, refer to Public Works Committee, Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals two oh nine to two twelve together. Thank you. Proposal number two oh nine authorizes intersection controls at Auburn and Henry Streets in District Twenty-two. Proposal number two ten authorizes a speed limit reduction of twenty-five miles per hour in the Bates Hendricks neighborhood in District Sixteen and Twenty-one. Proposal number twenty-one, two eleven authorizes intersection controls at Mann and Southport Roads in District Twenty. Proposal number two twelve authorizes intersection controls at the intersections of Alabama and Seventeenth Street, New Jersey and Seventeenth Street, and Carrollton Avenue and Seventeenth Streets in Districts Eleven and Seventeen. Counselor Gray moved, seconded by Counselor Ray, to send proposal numbers two oh nine through two twelve to the full council with a due pass recommendation, that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. Mr. Minorie, leader. The proposals carry twenty-four to zero. There is no business under special service district council, there is no business under new business. We'll proceed to announcements and adjournments. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have two quick announcements. The first one is, there are very few computer labs on the far east side of Indianapolis, and this Friday, August eighteenth, from eleven to four, there will be a computer lab open house where Lily Endowment provided, Pathway Resource Center with fourteen thousand dollars to update their computer technology. Come out and join us, the address is one zero one one nine, John Marshall Drive, I'll be there, eleven to four, this Friday, food for freshmen to be there. Also, Labor Fest. I was asked by the president of the Central Labor Council to remind everyone to join us on Saturday, September the second, on Georgia Street, from eleven to six, for the Labor Fest. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick announcement, as many of you have been following, we've had a fatality and a lot of accidents on the White River due to all the flooding and the low-head dam danger. This Saturday, August nineteenth, during the typical White River Yacht Club annual open house, we will have safety demonstrations and live rescue tips, as well as river reading workshops from Indiana DNR at two P.M., and then IFD's Special Rescue Squad at three thirty. So that's free to the public, and we're just trying to increase river safety awareness. Thank you.
Thank you.
workshops from Indiana DNR at two P M., and then IFD's Special Rescue Squad at three thirty. So that's free to the public, and we're just trying to increase river safety awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to also let everyone know that on August twenty-first, the United States will experience a solar eclipse, and Indianapolis Parks Department will be hosting a, an eclipse-watching party at Highland Park, starting at twelve fifteen P M. In the afternoon, there will be food trucks and an opportunity to watch the eclipse. If you weren't able to join us, and you do want to watch the eclipse, be sure to do it safely with the approved eyewear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselors, you should have had at your desk a couple of documents that hopefully will assist you as we go through the budgeting process, glossary, and just some abbreviations, some terminology that we use over and over, and then also, the clerk did email copies of these documents to you. The document agenda for this meeting of the council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Madam President.
The chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment, by all counselors in memory of Deputy Chief James Waters and Lieutenant Aaron Allen, by Counselor Courtney in memory of Carmen Taylor, by Counselor Adamson in memory of Vicki Lane and Mike Schmidt, by Counselor Scales and Gray in memory of Jean Stacy Bradford, by Counselor Feaster in memory of Robert Temple, by Counselor Lewis in memory of Denise K. LaRue, by Counselor McQuillan in memory of Parma Joseph Tommy Sergi, by Counselor Westler in memory of Dewey A. Hauser, by Counselor Mascari in memory of Catherine Bates, Michael T. Boba Junior, Helen Kavanaugh, and Kathleen Beeson. Madam President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I've here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advised of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Here are no objections. The motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Here are no further motions. We are adjourned.